Good evening. This 6 o'clock, Monday, October 21st, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education is called to order at 6 o'clock. First item on the agenda is 199.25, Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. And we are returning to having a student lead us this month. This month, we have some students from Elliott and Eliana Knopka, Curtis Goodwin, and Dean Wiley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you. And Mr. Lane, do you have something you would like to say about the students?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So, one of the things that's wonderful going on at Elliott this year is we have talked at the start of our school year about everyday superheroes and what's our superpowers around, PBIS, being safe, responsible, respectful. And these three individuals in here, I kind of want to share what their superpower has been since the start of this school year. And I'm going to start off with Curtis. He was the one holding the mic tonight. So Curtis is from his teacher, Ms. Grunwald. Curtis Goodwin III is a 4th grader and has been at Elliott ever since he was in kindergarten. He enjoys watching TV and reading books. He also likes to play soccer. Curtis said that his mom and dad teach him how to be compassionate. Curtis said that math is his favorite subject, which would be a superpower. And Curtis is a proud Eagle. From Curtis's family, Curtis is the oldest of four siblings, Carter, Sreni, Skylar, and Celeste. I believe they're all in the back there. Being a big brother comes with its roles, which Curtis has always been inspired in leadership, where he said one day he would like to encourage the world to be a better place. His parents always taught him pure values, embracing being his own self by showing love and compassion. One of his interests is being competitive in soccer, enjoying bright futures, and helping others, whether it's a store or at home, helping with his siblings with homework. When he grows up, he'd like to be a pastor and also have multiple businesses where he can give to others that are in need. One thing that he has learned is that in life, hold on one minute. One thing that he has learned is that life can come with its challenges, but always forgive and remain positive. That's crazy.
All right, Curtis.
Our next individual is from Ms. Skinner, Dean Wiley. Dean is a 2nd grader in Ms. Skinner's class at Elliott Elementary. When not being a superstar student and helping his fellow classmates, he enjoys playing football out in the community, and he participates in class, loves to meet his learning goals, and thrives on being a leader. So again, talking about his superpowers. From his family, says Dean is 8 years old. Dean is the only boy in the family. He is in his 2nd year of football. He plays for a traveling football team, the Michigan Outlaws. They won all but one game this season, and currently they are competing in the playoffs for a chance to play in the championship at Ford Field. He is a linebacker and defensive end.
All right, Dean.
And our last individual, Eliana Knopka, is, this is from Ms. Landewer, her classroom teacher, is a 5th grade student at Elliott. She has attended Elliott her entire academic career. We're seeing a trend here. It says Elliott has 3 bunnies, a dog, a bearded dragon, even some curious squirrels that she feeds in her backyard. She's extremely helpful, responsible, curious, and kind. Her family says Elliott is unique and kind, loves competing in gymnastics, playing chess, and family time. She is small but mighty. We are always continuing to be surprised and proud of her, and she's continually asking me to play chess with her every day. Last year, "Mr. Lane, when's the chess team coming? I'm working on something." So these are our wonderful soaring Eagles of Elliott.
Thank you. Thank you.
Will they stay up here? They're going to take a picture. Do you want me to make a picture?
Sure.
Turn your award around so they can see it.
Yes.
Look right at me, guys. You ready? Next item on the agenda is 200.25, which is a roll call attendance. Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Ms. May, absent. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
President Gray.
Present.
6-0.
6-1.
6-1, I'm sorry. 6-1.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 201.25. We're going to be adjourned to a closed session. The motion is that the Board of Education will adjourn to a closed session pursuant to 8 seed, consults attorney regarding the purpose of strategy and negotiation sessions connected with collective bargaining agreement, and 8H to consider material exempt from discussions or disclosure by state or federal statute according to the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion and support. All right. Hall in favor? Do I have, item 202.25, adjournment to an open meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn to open meeting?
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
All in favor?
Mr. President, I would like at this time to make a motion that this board, that this board ask Ms. Jennifer Curry to serve as our interim superintendent until June 30th of the end of the year. Until a time that we name a permanent superintendent.
Support.
All right. Do you have any questions from anybody? All right. Ms. Heinz, if you'd like to take the role?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I also would like to offer the motion that we continue with this draft of her supplemental pay and that that begin immediately with what she has negotiated with our attorney.
So just clarifies, the supplemental pay agreement that was presented to the Board?
Yes.
Support.
All right. Any questions? All right. Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 203.25, Recognitions and Presentations. Our first presentation is our audit presentation for Ms. Claire in Plant Moran.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Jamie Essenmacher from Plant Moran. She's been our partner for several years.
I did not get the applause for the audit. Well, thank you so much for having me here today. All exciting things happening before this. So as she'd mentioned, my name's Jamie Essenmacher. I have served as your audit partner for a number of years and been working with the district prior to becoming partner at Plant Moran. I am here to present the results of the audit for June 30th, 2024. So with that, I will get started. So a couple audit highlights I'd like to start with. So for the basic financial statements, I guess I'll take a step back. So in your deliverable package, there was really four documents that we put in there for review. The first one would be the audited financial statements that are in final draft form. They'll go final as of today, once the Board approves. The single audit report, so because the district receives over $750,000 and expends that in a current year in federal funds, they're required to have a compliance audit. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The required post-audit communication with the Board, so that's the required auditing standard communication that we have with the Board each year. So there's a formal wrap-up of that. And then the PowerPoint presentation. So the majority of the presentation today is spent on the PowerPoint. However, if you have any questions on any of the slides or documents that I've presented, please feel free to stop and ask questions. So with that, I will take a step back. So then going to the basic audit, so we are going to issue an unmodified clean audit opinion, which is the highest level of an opinion that we can provide to the district. It is what essentially you've hired Plant Moran to do. The audit was conducted starting, we come out about two weeks in July, and then come about about two weeks in August, and then wrapping up today, and was performed primarily on-site. So we put the finance team through quite the wringer over the past few months, so I'm sure that they're equally as happy and ready to clap for today as well. We did have one finding as related to audit readiness, and really this focused a little bit with the district and the turnover that kind of occurred in the middle of the audit process, as when we come in and take a look at the books, some of those items were still being adjusted and worked through. But again, working really closely with the finance team in order to ensure that we were able to get the audit done and completed in a timely fashion. In relation to the federal programs, so we did test your ESSR funds as well as the Service Learning Grant. Happy to report that there was an unmodified opinion on programs tested and no findings reported. And then as part of your bond funds and sinking funds, we are required to do compliance testing in accordance with Section 1351 and 1212 of the State of Michigan. Also happy to report no findings were identified as it relates to that as well. So again, we are issuing a clean opinion. The financial statements are the responsibility of management, which they have assumed responsibility for. Plant Moran is responsible for rendering an opinion on those statements, and the audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards in the United States. All right. So we're going to start with the balance sheet, and we're really just going to focus on the general fund overall, as it is the district's largest fund. So when we take a look at the left side of the graphs, we start with the total assets of the district and the general fund. So the general, we're at $55.4 million. So really, that's made up of really three key components. 48% are about $26.4 million in cash and investments. $28.8 million in receivables, about 52%, which is primarily made up of your July and August state aid receivables, as well as a little bit of property tax receivables. And then about $117,000 that relates to really other assets, inventory, and some prepaid expenses. So then when you move over to the right side of the grant, right side of the graph, you take a look at the total liabilities. We're about $23.3 million at June 30th. These really are made up of accounts payable due to other funds, as well as the primary one being the accrued P-roll. So that's about $12.1 million, or about 52%. This is primarily driven by teachers on the 26Ps that are accrued at June 30th, and their related benefits and retirement expenses. When we move down, down the, past the balance sheet and into the income statement, we then take a look at the revenue and other financing sources. So as you can see, from '23 to '24, the revenue did increase approximately $11.7 million, or about 8.7%. In looking at the 2024 data, the general fund is really comprised of local sources, which is about $22.6 million, which is primarily made up of the property taxes, about $18.3 million in some vocational education money, which is about $1.6 million. The state, the state funding is the state aid that the district receives, so about $113 million for the current year. And then there is a small amount of federal dollars that are associated with the general fund that relates to Medicaid, which is about $156,000. And then the inter-district sources relate to the ACT 18 funds and the enhanced millage that make up a majority of this balance. So that did see an increase from last year to prior of about $1.9 million. The last piece of the pie really represents transfers, so of about $751,000, and other financing sources, which includes proceeds from the sale of capital assets and within the general fund of about $240,000. All right. So now we're going to move down. I will say, my eyes are a little old. It's kind of hard to see it. So now we take a look at the total expenditures for the general fund on June 30th, so they were $123.9 million. Expenses did decrease significantly in the current year, about $28.8 million, or 18.9%. In the graphic presented here, you will see the breakout of expenditures by function codes. So we look at instruction, support, athletics, community service, the transfers, as well as the capital outlay. This data shows that the most significant expense relates to the categories of instruction and support, which is where we would expect that to be. And they have also experienced decreases, as you can see, but overall, the percentages remained fairly consistent from year to year. There's just the allocation of the change with the significant decrease in the expenditures as represented here. And then visually, you can see that the transfers to other funds also decreased this year by approximately $4.7 million. And really, that is a product of timing and how the transfer of funds need to work between the special education fund as well as the grants fund. So then here's a, essentially, we take the expenditures, and then we put them back together, and then we break them apart in a different manner. So this takes a look at the general fund expenditures by salaries and fringe benefits, as well as the supplies and others. So we'd like to show this slide, because as you're all aware, the most significant expense for the district is, in fact, its employees and the salaries and wages. So we can see that about 86% of, in both 2024 and 2023, make up the salaries and benefit expense for the district. This is fairly consistent with what we see in other districts. Typically, we see that most are greater than 85% throughout the state. Next, we'll take a look at a general fund balance, five-year history. So the district ended a fund balance with a fund balance of about $32.2 million, which is an increase of about $22.9 million from fiscal year 2023. So this next slide takes a look at, what we'd like to do here is, on the very bottom of this graphic, we show the statewide average across the state. It's about one, it's one year behind, because districts are just now reporting June 30th, 2024 data. So it represents the statewide average. It excludes Detroit schools. And then it puts Wayne Westland on the top above there, and it shows their, what essentially their general fund balance is as a percentage of expenditures. So how we calculate that for the district is we take the total fund, the total general fund expenditures, and then we also take the total fund balance, but there might be certain categories such as non-spendables or restricted amounts, if they're within the general fund that we would not count in this calculation. Some Gatsby terminology there, but essentially, they're not allowed to be spent. So we look at the non, essentially, the unassigned, and some of those assigned balances and perform this calculation. So as you can see here, for 2023, the state average was 22.2%. And then the district reported, Wayne Westland reported their fund balance as a general fund percentage of about 25.9%. So, so a little bit above that state average, we have seen this increase, as you can see even from the graphics, as COVID monies has come into play and as districts are continuing to save on that fund balance line there. So just wanted to highlight that there as well for the current year. And really, that ends my prepared comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Do you have any questions from members of the Board? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Claire will now present on the budget amendment.
Okay. In case you don't know, I'm Jewel Claire. I haven't been here just for a short time in the business office, coming today to try to, oh, there it is, do a budget amendment. Normally, we don't do budget amendments at this time of the year. Why do a budget at this time? Because currently, our budget that was done for this year, for '24-'25, shows a loss of $12.5 million with the negatives of ending fund balance of $8.9 million. And so I wanted to do just at least the general fund budget at this time to, so that we can show that we aren't in that kind of a situation, get the, kind of get the record straight, get this out on the web, so that this would be our latest budget, so that people would look at this versus what we have out there right now. The current budget that I am proposing, I've put no increases in revenues in there at this time. I will go through what those are on the next slide, but I put a 5% increase in expenses and just brought the $20 million of ESSR salaries back over into general fund to show that even with no increase in revenue and those salaries brought back over, we're in a basically break even situation. I will do a mid-year budget for all funds in the December to January range. That's what we normally do. What this budget does not, the revenue, okay, I'm so, so, there we go. It's very conservative, because I just want to, wanted to show that we are not in that situation. Even bringing those $20 million of salaries back over, we will not be in a loss. It doesn't include, we added 100 kids. This is 300 kids more than the budget had shown. That's what that means. We will be getting 5 point, roughly, 5.6 million of UAL. This doesn't have any expense attached to it. We'll just come in as revenue. This doesn't show increase in property taxes, increase in enhancement millage, and I did put in 5% change in expenses. So these are the items that I know of that are going to be happening as far as revenue. Could be, could be more, could be less. But even with those 20 million coming back, we'll be in a positive situation. And I'm hoping that the Board will approve this at this time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions about the budget amendment that we'll be voting on later? All right. And I would like to just remind the room that all this was presented at our finance meeting that is now an open board meeting, so we've all seen this. That's why, if you're questioning why we're not questioning anything, we've asked a lot of questions already. Thank you, Ms. Claire. Next item on the agenda is 204.25, and this is Citizens Comments on Agenda Items. Do we have any forms? Any of them for agenda items? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like we have a couple here. The first one is Gwen Frettenborough. She would like to speak on inform K-12. Oh. Oh, it's coming unplugged. No? Is it now? Okay. Just bear with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're going to get started anyways. Ms. Frettenborough?
Hi. My name is Gwen Frettenborough. I'm speaking again about the inform K-12 that's, again, on the agenda to be approved for tonight. Last time I spoke, I talked about how long it took to get approved to actually go to the conference that I was supposed to go to. Now, using the same format, I'm talking about how long it took once I submitted all my paperwork and actually to get reimbursed from said conference. I submitted my information on August 15th at about 11:30, which was a Thursday. This is when everyone was back to work and working five days a week. And I didn't, it didn't go through all the steps in the process until 8:28. And I know at the board meeting when I spoke before, it was because people weren't at work, and they didn't have to check their email over the summer, and once everybody got back, that things would change. So I'm just bringing that into light, that it still took a long time for the process to happen. It sat and stalled at step nine for about a good five business days. So I still don't know if this is the best format to use. I did look through the Finance Committee information. It didn't say that there was any other program looked at, or if anybody was talked to, like if any staff members that have used this form was talked to about how well K-12 informed worked on our end, or if it was just talked to at central office. So I'd like, that's just my information. I'm hoping that that can be arranged. On a separate note, I am the content lead for Secondary Education Social Studies, and I did notice in one of the minutes, it talked about curriculum and resources, and I'd be happy to meet with anybody if you'd like to know about the social studies curriculum for secondary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jennifer Crane. Also speaking about K-12.
I'm getting my voice back, so I'm really sorry. I'm trying. So we're taking our yearbook students to the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association Conference tomorrow. I have done this field trip for six years with my students. It is a phenomenal experience. But in order to do this, I have to follow the K-12 informed protocol. Followed all the protocol, filled out all the information. I got approval from my principal rather quickly. Knowing that the trip would be outside of school hours, I got a quote for a charter bus, because when you fill out this form, you have to provide a quote. So I provided a quote for transportation, knowing that it wouldn't be through our buses anyway. So I got that information for them, put all of the appropriate account numbers on this form. And so last week, we were a week out from the trip, and I inquired, because I hadn't heard anything about if transportation had been approved, and I needed to get permission slips out to parents. It was at this time that I found out that Transportation had approved the trip, but they needed my account number for yearbook. I shared with them that that account number was on the K-12 form, so that they could just look on the form, to which Chad Kondrick informed me that he and Rita Harvey do not get copies of the K-12 forms, even though they're in charge of helping with the transportation part of it. So essentially, I had to complete the process twice. I had to send all of this information to Chad, the yearbook account number, the forms for the field trip itself, the quote, which they used, and they got it done quickly for me, of course. But the thing was, is that it was all said and done finally on Thursday of last week. So I was able to give out permission slips on Friday for a field trip on Tuesday. And if you know as well as I do, that's not a lot of time for parents to do what they need to do. The system is quite flawed. The people who need to be informed don't get informed, or that needs to be fixed. And so as a teacher, trying to do this and get this in a timely manner, it takes a lot of time out of my day that I have to do, sometimes when I have students in the room, sometimes I have to stay later than I would to make sure this stuff gets done. From a teacher's end, it's not user-friendly, and it doesn't seem very efficient. And I would be happy to help look at other possibilities from my end and what I've gone through, because like I said, prior to informed, I've done this for six years, the process moved like that. Yes, it was a paper trail, but it was effective, and I never had these issues that I've had since we've gone to this new system. So I would be happy to help you find another one that's more efficient for everybody all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Khan.
Hey. Steve Khan, Wayne Westland Education Association Teachers President. I just wanted to remind the community and the Board that this is a phenomenal district. And the education that we provide, K-12, pre-K, post-K, is phenomenal, and I'm a product of that. I don't want anyone to lose sight of that, okay? We do a phenomenal job. Any of you can go to any classroom in any school and watch and come in there, and our teachers are teaching their butts off. Our pares are working hard, custodians are working hard. We have a great thing going. We really do, guys. We really do. And I just want to remind everyone of that. Congrats to Ms. Curry on the position. The MEA fully supports that position. With the budget, I just want to make it clear that, thank God, we didn't fire our bus drivers. That's all I wanted to say. Thank God. Thank God we didn't fire them, okay? Thank God they didn't lose their houses. their butts off. Our pairs are working hard, custodians are working hard. We have a great thing going. We really do, guys. We really do. And I just want to remind everyone of that. Congrats to Ms. Curry on the position. The M E A fully supports that position. With the budget, I just want to make it clear that, thank God, we didn't fire our bus drivers. That's all I wanted to say. Thank God. Thank God, we didn't fire them. Okay? Thank God they didn't lose their houses and their families and mortgage, you know? Thank God we didn't. And thank you to the new administration for working with us and moving forward. So, with that said, I just want to remind everyone once again, you can't find a better district than this. You really can't. The educational things that we provide to our students are top-notch, top-notch. And I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other forms for agenda items, if anybody does still wish to speak on agenda item, you can still turn in a form and speak during the non-agenda portion. We'll be moving on to two oh five point two five, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move approval.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Any comments from the board? All right, Ms. Heinz, can you take the roll call?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to beg my leave from the meeting if I could, with apologies to the board and to those who attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Next item is two oh six point two five, which is Board of Education Committee Report. First one is Property Committee from Dr. Weaver.
The Property Committee met on October eighth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven a.m. The City of Inkster continues to reach out to the district regarding the property known as Blanchett, which is located in the City of Inkster. They would like for our district to cede them this property. Our response has been, and will continue to be, that the Blanchett property is the property of the Wayne Westland School District, and that if the City of Inkster wishes to acquire it, they certainly can do that through purchase. The meeting was adjourned at twelve nineteen p.m.
Next, the Finance Committee Report. Ms. May?
Thank you. The Finance Board Workshop Meeting was held on Thursday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, beginning at five thirty p.m. Ms. May, Mrs. Abney Mitchell, Dr. Weaver, Ms. Heinz, Mr. Gray, and Mr. Cox were present. Plant Moran presented the annual audit for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Mrs. Claire presented the twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment. Mr. Be- Be- Never, stop, Bezak. Bezik?
Besik.
No, Besik. Mr. Besik, Ms. Fawn, and Mrs. Johnson presented a plan focused on student well-being, safety, and community engagement. Mr. Beebe shared information regarding the usage and purchase of inform K twelve. Mrs. Claire presented both the investment report and check register. Acting now interim superintendent, Mrs. Curry shared comments. Board members shared comments. The meeting was adjourned at seven thirty-six p.m.
Thank you, Ms. May. And then for Policy Committee Report, we go back to Dr. Weaver.
The committee met on Tuesday, October fourteenth, at twenty twenty-four, ten o'clock a.m. Dr. Weaver and Ms. Heinz were present. The Policy Committee continues to work on board policies and bylaws. A full presentation to the board of the board operating procedures and board bylaws will be shown at a future date. We agreed to future meetings and the dates for those meetings, and we were adjourned at ten twenty-nine a.m.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Next item is two oh seven point two five, Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance. The first item comes from Ms. Claire.
It's the budget that I discussed and request that you vote on.
Do, do I support?
Support.
All right. I have a motion, support for the board to approve this as a service and finance item one as presented, and wait for the need to read the enclosed resolution. Do I have any comments from any board members or questions? Nope. Seeing none. Ms. Heinz, you can take the roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Six zero, motion carries.
And next item is Recommendation to Renew Inform K twelve License. Dr. Opheli, did you have anything else you wanted to add about it?
Would you like me to read the?
Sure.
So as Darrell Beebe, Executive Director of Technology, presented at the October tenth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, inform K twelve is a district-wide license that supports up to one hundred processes, unlimited form submissions, and unlimited user accounts. Inform K twelve supports the district's process by expeditiously and accurately routing forms for approval throughout the district electronically. I recommend the Board of Education approve the renewal of inform K twelve not to exceed twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to cover the period from December first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This purchase will be covered by the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Do I have any questions or com- oh, do I have a motion?
So, yes, yes, support. Sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, support.
All right. Do we have any comments on this?
I do.
Sure.
Yes.
So I, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, so, Mr. Chair, if it's not, you'll let me know, I'm sure.
Sure, sure.
But there were just some things that were raised, and I would really like to give the opportunity for either Dr. Opheli or Mr. Beebe to respond to those, those, because I know you talked somewhat about it at the Finance Committee Meeting, right? But I don't know if we didn't ask, so I would like to know.
Sure.
Excuse me, if other mechanisms have been reviewed or other databases, things like that. Do you know what I mean? So just like those questions that were just raised.
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's my understanding, within the process, that I, I haven't, or our group did not review any others. My understanding is that before this came on, there was some, some research before they purchased the inform K twelve. I'd have to dig into that a little bit more, but that's my understanding.
Okay. And then the follow-up question that I have is, has anything been shared with the staff in regards to the flow chart, right? So like, contract approvals or field trip requests, they go from this person to this person to this person. Has anything like that been shared out so that everybody kind of knows what the flow is? And then you, I know you shared with us on whatever timeline.
Yes.
But that was just kind of like how things have been going. But is there, has there been anything published in regards to the expectations of a timeline? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It, it makes sense, but no, that has not been published to the staff.
Okay, so maybe that's something that
Yep.
needs to be addressed?
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
And publish to staff, but not just to staff so that they know, but others who are responsible for approving, so that they know the expectation is rather, it's twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, whatever that timeline is, just so everyone is on the same page to get it through.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's a systems issue
Right.
because I'm familiar with inform K twelve. We use it.
Yes.
But I know it can be a people issue
Right.
where it can get stuck.
Yeah, and I was thinking as they were speaking about it, and we were talking about it, we kind of know where things got stuck. And so it's just a matter of coming together and, and getting clarity on that, and making sure that the process just goes all the way through. And I'm guilty at times where I've had something, didn't realize it, and then by the time I realized, realized it and hit the goal, you know, I held up maybe like five days or something like that. So I, I, I definitely think we can, we can come, become more efficient with it. I think it's a great tool, so.
Mr. Beebe, do you want to talk about the upcoming training that we talked about at the cross-department meeting last week?
Um, yeah, so, once again, though, inform K twelve has, has said that they would train if, if folks are interested in training in regards to that. So, we hadn't picked like a date, but they said that they would train.
Right. And I think even internally, if I'll just add too, is that we're even finding within our team, is that we want to make sure that, to I think Ms. May's question of, we will know who's routed to what. So if you're grants, you will, you know, you'll go through Ms. Polikovich.
Right.
If you are through K five instruction, you will go through K pro. So that will be part of the training, and we'll really get that crisp and clear.
Right. And I would also like to add, if, if we discover that it's a particular building that needs additional support, that we'd make a visit to that building to provide some clarification as to what our expectations are and what some of the hangups that have been presented at some of the board meetings are as well.
And, and just to clarify, though, this is at the approval process that we're finding these issues, right? The, it's not generally the people submitting, that they're getting stuck in somebody's queue somewhere.
That's what it sounds like.
Right, yes.
So we're not saying that you're doing anything wrong.
Right, absolutely.
I think it's just that they're sitting in queues and it's a people issue.
Right. Correct.
One thing I'd just like to add, because I heard you say that if people want to come to the training, but I, I, I would like to hear that the training is, is going to be mandatory for the people that have to do the approval, so that we're clear on that.
Yep. No, it makes sense. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that took care of my question, took care of yours.
Sorry.
All right. All right, seeing no, no other questions. Ms. Heinz, if you can take the roll call vote?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms., Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Uh, President Gray?
Yes.
Okay, we have like five, one.
Can I just say something else, though?
Sure.
Or no? Okay. So I just want to be clear, like, we approved this, but if there's still issues, please bring them so that we know and we're able to talk about them like we just did, because there's nothing like a conversation to keep the things flowing. So I just wanted to let you know that we are listening, and I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is two oh eight point two five, Review and Approval of Human Resources. Dr. Opheli?
Thank you, President Gray. At this time, I'd like to make a recommendation for Mr. Mark Woodson to be the next Wayne Memorial High School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director. Mr. Woodson comes to us with a bachelor's in physical education and health from Wayne State University, a master's in kinesiology and sports management from the University of Michigan, and he currently has a professional administrator permit. Previously has been an athletic director at Romulus Community Schools, an athletic director at Southfield Community Schools, and currently is the interim, or I'm sorry, he's, he's had a position as the interim athletic director at Wayne Memorial High School. At this time, I would like to present to the board a recommendation for Mr. Woodson to be the next Assistant Principal slash Athletic Director.
Move approval.
So move, support.
Okay, move and support. Do we have any comments from the board? All right.
Is he here?
He's not in attendance tonight.
Okay.
Seeing none. Ms. Heinz, if you can take the roll call vote?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is two oh nine point two five, which is citizens' comments on non-agenda items, general. I have a few sheets here. If anybody else is wishing to speak, please get the sheets up to me as soon as possible. The first person is Scott Martin.
Good evening. I'm Scott Martin. I'm an English teacher at Wayne Memorial High School. The reason I'm here tonight is to implore this board and our interim superintendent to create a policy to ban student cellphone use in our schools. It's a constant battle in the classroom to gain students' attention. They're, they lack the self-discipline to put them away for a few minutes. I mean, I know I have trouble. I sometimes find myself compelled to scroll mindlessly. And I'm telling you, adolescents lack that sort of self-awareness and self-discipline to control themselves, to put it away every day in my classes, even though the rule is, put them away, they're out, they're being used constantly. I could give you, if you'd like, I can provide you a packet of academic research and articles about the detrimental effects of cellphones and social media on adolescents, but I'm sure most of you recognize that there is a problem in our society with them. They're used to be, they're used, involved in fights. They can call attention to fights and have more bystanders stand around and record them. They're used to spread gossip, and of course, there's the lack of classroom engagement. Not to mention the lack of awareness of the world around them when their, their heads are craned over looking at their one-eyed god. Social media adds to depression and all kinds of emotional disorders as well. So, sorry, just looking at my notes. We have some neighboring districts that have begun to ban cellphones. There are states that are banning cellphones. Ohio is one of them. Talked to some teachers in Ohio this summer when I was up at a program in Michigan Tech. I know it will not be easy. I know there would be pushback from parents and of course students, but I think it can be done. If we say that we care about the social and emotional learning of our students, I think this is something that we should take care of. We can, I think, the research shows that we can see at least modest academic gains and other improvements in student behavior if we rid our schools of these devices. Let me just leave you with two anecdotes, because I don't know what my time is. Timer's not on. So one, I, I just read of, and I, sorry, I don't remember the name of the school. There's a small private school that does not allow students to use cellphones. And of course, that deters some students from applying. However, with exit interviews with seniors, they said that the best thing the school did for them was to not allow them to have cellphones as part of their academic journey. Last anecdote, I took some of my 10th graders sailing on the Detroit River last month, and the crew had, said, okay, we're putting our cellphones away, and we're going to be quiet for two minutes. We're just going to listen and observe what's around us. So we were out on the Detroit River. It was a perfect late summer day. The ropes were creaking, the masts were creaking, we could hear the water. And after that, the students could go back to their cellphones or do whatever the activities that we had. So when asked what was their favorite part of that trip, several students said two minutes of quiet, to silence that chaos that they are part of. And this was just a little taste of what that freedom is like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Everard, junior.
Good evening, board. Congratulations to Ms. Curry as well for that nomination. I'm one of the precinct delegates in Inkster and an active community member as well. I'm coming to the Wayne Westland Community School Board in regards to the transportation. I wasn't able to attend the meeting previously, the previous meeting around transportation, but I also have students inside of Wayne Westland Schools. Our Inkster School students are missing school because of the transportation bus. I just wanted to get an update in regards to what is the logistical strategy to get our students in Inkster, and if this is any other areas within side of the school district that you are, all are servicing with bus routes and regarding proper execution? And is there any idea to include private entities to offset bus transportation in regards to hiring with your school system's buses? There are many software platforms as well that can assist with the robo-calling execution. I found out this has been going on for two years within side of my household, that children in Inkster has been missing school even last year with not properly having bus transportation. But we are receiving robo calls way after. They have missed the bus. The bus have not properly came. So we have children waiting on the corner for their bus to be picked up and then getting a robo call to our homes roughly around ten, eleven a.m. And that is very inefficient for us to properly provide transportation for our children in a household, a working-class household at, at that, to get our kids to school effectively. And also coming as a business partner in Westland, we are having a Slice of Hope Campaign for Breast Cancer Awareness this Saturday at Pizza Cat Westland. All proceeds to our specialty pizza that's going to be sold will go to Carmano's Cancer Institution and American Cancer Society, and we will be giving away free slices of pizza between twelve and three p.m. this Saturday. We effectively did last Saturday. And our address is three zero nine one five Ann Arbor Trail, Westland, Michigan, and that'll be this Saturday from twelve to three.
Thank you.
I'll clap for free pizza.
Next, we have Olivia Farmer.
All right. Hello. My name's Olivia Farmer, and I'm a senior at Wayne Memorial High School. I am currently the president of Wayne's Chapter of National Honor Society, a student council member, four-year class of two thousand twenty-five president, and an upward bound member. I stand here today to express the concerns of students and community members alike regarding the recent events like John Glenn's homecoming football game and the repressions that followed. To say the least, what happened was horrific, and in no way did anyone from Glenn's- and the repressions that followed. To say the least, what happened was horrific, and in no way did anyone from Glenn or Wayne want that to happen. As a result, a rule was implemented for the football games to follow, setting strict guest limits for players, marching band members, and cheerleaders. Wayne's home, uh, Wayne's Homecoming Football Game was directly affected by this rule, leading to a vast game, wait, leading to a vast amount of alumni and students turned away. Um, a lot of money lost by the senior class and ultimately for a tradition of, uh, championing Wayne pride to be diminished. To our understanding recently, uh, this rule was changed for John Glenn. Without proper communication of why things happen or how rules are adjusted, at least to assumptions being made to why the rules only affected us and not Glenn. Various community members, including myself, um, believe that this has become an equitability and inclusion issue. Based on Wayne's location approximately to Norway, or infamously known as Shacktown, negative connotations have been tagged on us. These stark comparisons between Wayne and Glenn have ma- uh, been made since the 90s, according to Wayne and Glenn alum. Seeing that Glenn was always the coveted school to the board office, has also been stated by alum that Glenn used to be called the Country Club School, which is historically known for serving predominantly white Americans. Is this truly what the central office wants community members to assume? In regards to understanding, um, underscoring, equitability, and inclusivity, the fact that those who are on the foot, uh, football team, cheerleading team, and marching band were only allowed to invite guests, which speaks volumes. Though important, they only represent a fraction of who comprises Wayne Memorial. What about other student organizations? Many of them were not allowed to attend the football game or fundraise for their clubs at the homecoming fair, which was canceled. This is setting the notion that if you do not belong to these organizations or clubs, you don't belong at all. That is not the message that should be sent throughout our school, nor does it uphold the standards this district prides itself on. Wayne was not the only school involved, so why are we the only ones facing the consequences? As an involved student and a proud member of Wayne Westland, I advise our communication be clearer before assumptions like these are continuing to be made. Thank you.
Last, we have Nick Wright? Ni, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Ni Wright. I'm a senior at Wayne Memorial, involved in student council, upper bound, and other organizations. And instead of talking about how, instead of addressing the situation I want, uh, that Olivia was speaking about, I want to talk about a student, uh, perspective. So, as homecoming, uh, week approached, we were, uh, we as students were excited for a week full of school spirit. Students were finally opened up, finally opening up and showing their enthusiasm, but then we were blindsided. The fair was suddenly canceled, as only students involved in certain organizations were allowed to attend it. Uh, I personally was appalled. This sparked, this sparked questions like, why punish over 1,300 kids for actions that less than a classroom of students can contribute to? What were the intentions behind this decision? Were they trying to dampen the school spirit we were just trying to show? On top of that, our senior class lost a significant amount of money due to this policy. With limited, with limited participation in homecoming activities, concession sales, and other fu- fundraising opportunities at the fair were impacted, leaving clubs with many items to give out, but none, no people to give them to. As a student council member, what's the point of preparing for such a pivotal moment if the students can't even fully enjoy it? What's the point of trying to raise school spirit if we can't even experience the best parts? This is where, this experience left us questioning whether our school, whether our voices and efforts even matter. School spirit should bring everyone together, not shut us out. As an involved student, I want to see unity within our school and our board. It seems to be that our board diminishes any chance of that happening. Thank you.
Thank you. No other forms for comments. The next item on the agenda is 210.25, which is Acting Superintendent's Report Comments. Ms. Curry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to our students and staff who spoke tonight. We hear you and we are committed to working together to move forward. Thank you to Plant Moran and Ms. Claire for your presentation. We also will be sending an update this week to our community regarding our current financial status. The District Trunk or Treat event was a great success. We appreciate the support of the community partners and the staff who made it possible. Our next community coffee is scheduled for November 7th at the Career Tech Center at 9:00 a.m., and the focus will be student well-being. And lastly, I look forward to continuing, to continuing to work together and for the opportunity to be your interim superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 211.25, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. I'll start with Mr. Cox.
Thank you, President Gray. I would like to extend my congratulations to Jen Curry and also add my, my thanks. You've done a remarkable job under, under very difficult circumstances and you've done it admirably. And, uh, the fact that you've been sitting here watching things, uh, go by has, uh, has helped greatly, and I certainly appreciate the tremendous effort that you've made on behalf of the district. I appreciate also the comments made tonight. The one about cellphone use, uh, there has to be an answer to that. I, I don't know if when you walk through the school, all of a sudden your cellphone turns into a school's tool and all, everything that you collect off it comes from the administration, because that's the way we got the buildings wired. Uh, and we use it as a tool that can help us, uh, in our, in our mission. But certainly that has to be dealt with. Uh, we had some discussions tonight about student achievement, and I have to think that there's a direct relationship between people staring at their phone and student achievement. So, thank you for coming up and talking to us about that. And thank you also to the teachers, uh, that brought up the issue of the service that we purchased for... I'm sorry that you're having trouble with it, but thanks for telling us, because frankly, we wouldn't know if you didn't do that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abby Mitchell?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I would just like to say thank you to the Elliott students and their principal who came out and said the pledge. And I'd like to say thank you to all the comments and, and I'd like to promote people to share your comments. That's the way things get started when we work together. And also, I would like to acknowledge that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, um, Domestic Violence Month, and I just want to give hope to the survivors, give hope to the caregivers, give hope to the fighters, and give hope to our students, because when they come to class, when they come to school, their schoolwork, their education is their fight, and I want to give them hope on that. And also, I just want to say thank you to the community. We had trunk or treat. It was an excellent first time, I believe. And, um, and I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to Ms. Curry. And it has been a pleasure working with you and I, and I look forward to working with you even more in the future. And thank you, everybody. I get clapped.
Ms. May?
First of all, just saying, I do. Just thank you to, um, Plant Moran and to Mrs. Claire for their presentations this evening. Thank you, um, to Olivia and Nick for coming this evening and speaking to the board. Not Nick? Ni? I'm sorry. I thought it was Nick. Ni, I apologize. I wrote it wrong. Be quiet. Thank you for coming out this evening and sharing your concerns. Thank you for that. Um, thank you to the staff for your comments. It has been said previously, but we really appreciate hearing from you all because there are things that we don't know, and so when you let us know things, that allows us to ask questions. So thank you for that. Thank you to Mrs. Curry for all of your work and congratulations. Um, you have definitely made things a lot smoother in terms of our conversations, and I just appreciate your responsiveness. Um, I also like to just say that the trunk and treat event was extremely nice. It was fun. And it was just nice to finally be able to go to something outside of a meeting, so I, I just need to share happy's, right? It's been a bunch of meetings. So it was just really fun. The kids were fabulous, loved all the fun costumes, and just had an opportunity to do something I haven't done in a long time, because, you know, my son's 21, so I don't get to do the trunk and treats anymore. So thank you to, um, everyone that was behind that work. It was just, I didn't know what to expect, but I didn't expect what I saw when I got there, right? Just a parking lot full, and it was just a fabulous event. And with that, I, I do wonder, is there a communication that will be coming out in regards to the, um, changes and why the decisions were made or some conversation taking place at Wayne Memorial, so that students have a better understanding of what took place?
Yes, so we actually, we met with, um, administration and some staff today, and then we are actually going to go meet, um, we're waiting for a date with their whole student senate, and we're going to do that with both high schools moving forward. So, official communication, no, but we're doing much more internally and hands-on with the staffs.
Okay, okay. So, and then that will hopefully trickle down to students? Is that what the plan is?
Actually, we're going to meet right with students.
Okay, perfect.
But we're going to do it with both schools as well.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you for that. Um, I do also just want to mention, I do appreciate the, um, time that was taken at our, um, finance board workshop to talk about student well-being and what is occurring in the schools. And so if you have not had the opportunity to go back and to watch that particular board meeting, I think it is beneficial just to hear the work that's being done, um, the efforts that are being made, and just the level of awareness and concern that does exist. So, with that being said, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate, um, interim superintendent Jen Curry. You've been doing an amazing job. Um, I definitely enjoyed the, uh, coffee with the superintendent, uh, with the bus drivers. And at the trunk or treat, I seen the cutest costume and I wish I would have took a picture. It had a young girl, she had a Wayne Westland shirt on with the bus saying, "We're hiring." I thought that was so cool, and I hate I couldn't catch it, so I went to get a picture with that. It was awesome.
We need that mascot.
Yeah, I love it. It was awesome. And I'd like to congratulate, um, Mr. Woodson. And, um, I'm pretty excited. So over the weekend, I do a lot in the community, so I ran into this amazing organization, it's like National Association of Women in entertainment, and, um, I joined the organization. I'm an ambassador, but they help, um, like, students, they want to work with us to help them get into like, um, journalism, media, um, entertainment, like, music producers, radio. So it's really good to kind of figure out this type of program, and they want to do some stuff with financial literacy in the schools. And I'm on this committee, we're thinking about having this huge youth explosion with the youth and stuff like that, so just bringing all the districts together and with the entertainment, so I'm pretty excited about that, because I've always, um, loved to work with the Career Tech. I talked to the principal over there, like, doing more tours, let the community see what we offer the students, because it's amazing opportunities. So, that was a really exciting event. Um, as Ms. Abby Mitchell talked about today, um, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that's, you know, pretty good breast cancer. And I was able to go to Pizza Cat on Saturday, so that was fabulous to experience that. And I definitely love partnerships and relationships, and speaking of one of the students at, um, Wayne Memorial, I'm the class of '97, so we always do like fundraisers, we'll go like to US 12 and put something together. So maybe we should get the alumni together, right, and different groups, and maybe we should do some fundraisers. Maybe we can combine with Pizza Cat, some other organizations, get a location, and set like an alumni fundraiser to help you guys raise some money that you might have lost over, you know, for your senior year. So I think that'd be good. We can reach out to our alumni, the different partners. So I think that'd be good, you know, to help the self-esteem kids. It'd be fun. I love fun stuff. And, um, so Pizza Cat, um, trunk or treat. Oh, and then they also have another trunk or treat over at Hype. Um, it's going to be Monday, October the 28th at 6:00 o'clock over at Hype, so we have a partnership with them. Um, I'm the president of the Wayne Westland Kiwanis Club, so we have our meetings on the second Tuesday of the month at 3:15 at the Westland Library, and the fourth Tuesday at the Westland Library, so we're bringing on more partners. We have like Hype, we have ARC, we have like a lot of organizations, so I'm trying to really get that going, because it helps with literacy. And again, we had a, um, organization donate $400 over to John Glenn to get the key club going. I got to get over to Wayne Memorial, because I want you guys to have that same opportunity to do some different things. So we'll get some money going to help you guys with service projects, so I'm excited about that. And let's see. Oh, so I'm excited. Uh, some of our colleagues, we're going to be going to Lansing for the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference. I love going to those conferences, because we meet, uh, different board members in other districts. We learn best practices. I love taking the classes, because it's really helpful when it comes to being on the board, because there's a lot of decisions we have to make, and it kind of helps us to be able to talk to other districts, see how to get to certain things, and just learn different things to make us better board members. And, so this, and, I think that's all, folks. Thanks.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to echo the comments about our interim superintendent. She has done a fine job, and in my estimation, deserves the job permanently. But, um, I kind of feel like the way it is at home sometimes, you can argue, but you know you're not going to get your way. Sometimes that happens. But I do want to say that I appreciated the board discussion tonight in closed session. It was an actual discussion. Nobody was fighting anyone. Nobody was trying to kill anybody. It was an actual discussion, and it was an iron, sharpening iron, um, so that we could come to the conclusion that we came to. So I do appreciate the board for that. And I have to, uh, tell you, uh, sir, that I am 100% behind, uh, this issue of cellphones. I can tell you as... Well, that was pretty weak, but... I can tell you, after serving, I believe, the last five years on the disciplinary committee, this is one thing I can say to our community. Almost every fight that came to discipline committee was because of cellphone comments.
Yes, they was.
And, uh, and so I am in total agreement and will lobby for it. I believe it's time we kind of moved into the area where we would allow students to have cellphones. But, uh, I know the old trick of hiding it under your desk, okay, you know? And it's been going on far too long, and, uh, and I would like to see that changed. And that concludes our comments for tonight.
Oh, he does?
My comments. You got to pick on every word, don't you?
I, I want to echo everything everybody else here has said about Ms. Curry. It's been a pleasure to work with you these last few months, and, uh, I'm very sad there's only two more of these to go for me. And I want to thank our Elliott students for coming and saying the pledge. It does, definitely feels like during the summer months, something feels missing, not having that, that small part at the beginning of our meetings. But I believe next month, we will start having that as a bigger part of our meeting, getting to showcase more of what's going on in our schools. And then, yes, I, I also wanted to talk about your comments about the phones in school. Recently, I read a book called The Anxious Generation, and basically what this book talks about is that, uh, as parents, but also as society, are, um, over-parenting our children in the physical world, even though, you know, while it does look on the news and the media like the world's getting more dangerous, crime is actually down. But we're under-parenting children in the digital world. Um, and one thing it talks about in that book is, it, when there have been studies of schools that have banned cellphones in schools, there's been incredible pushback from the students about the decision, as can be expected. But almost every time, at the end of the first year, the students say, "We don't want the phones back. This has been a much more productive school. I make, I'm getting along with other students better, and it's just a better experience for them." So I think it is something we should explore. And, uh, that's, that's all I have for tonight. So the next, uh, item on the agenda is 212.25, adjournment. Uh, do you have a motion?